Hello, good evening everyone.
My name is Levon.
Good evening. My name is Levon. I'm one of the Joel Thomasberg Fellows here at the HUB. So I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for joining us this evening. So on behalf of the HUB, I want to welcome everyone tonight to the Orange School Board Election. So since 2016, the HUB has proudly hosted electoral debates in forms for the MUIO Council Member and Board of Education elections. We remain committed to fostering civic discovery and participation here in Orange. Tonight, we continue the tradition by creating a space for open dialogue between candidates and our community. We believe that open dialogue and collaboration are essential to building a strong and supportive educational environment and that your participation helps ensure our community makes well-informed decisions. I do want to note that all candidates were invited to participate in tonight's debate. Therefore, we extend our sincere thank you to the three candidates who are here with us tonight. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, everyone.
I forgot to share that you have a little time reminder, okay? So when there is about one minute left, Levon will hold up a green flashcard. When there's 30 seconds left, she will hold up an orange flashcard. And when you're at your zero-minute warning, she will hold up a green flashcard. And that is just to make sure that we are remaining fair within our responses to each other, that also ensures that we're not speaking over each other. Because I know that all of us here tonight want to make sure that we're showing the full value of respect to the candidates and to also the audience who have also committed their time to bring out tonight. That's pretty much it. I mean, of course, we want to be fair, so let's not slander anyone for their ideas. Again, just maintain a respect that the forefront is really all the rules that we have, okay? All right, and so with that, do you have any questions, candidates? All right, we will start with opening remarks. If it is okay with you, I would like to have the ladies start first. And then you can go Darnell, and then you can go Antoine, okay? And so that means Antoine will give you the opening remarks. You can go first. You can go second, Darnell, and then Carolyn will have you take last, okay? Sounds good? All right, on your mark, Levon, when you're ready, I will start the timer. Just give me a thumbs up when you're ready. Ready? All right, opening remarks. Please introduce yourself, the skills and experience you bring that prepare you for the Board of Education, and identify your top three priorities as a potential Board of Education member. Just want to remind you that three minutes keeps, okay? I'm going to start with Carolyn. Carolyn, you can wait. I probably should introduce you guys. Antoine and Darnell. Beautiful. All right, take it away, Carolyn. Speak, you can pause the time. We'll pause the time when we start for you, okay?
Can you hear me now?
I need to hold it closer to your mouth.
Can you hear me now?
You want to take it out?
Okay, again, I need to count it.
Let's hold it, Carolyn, because we don't care if you're okay with that. I just want to make sure everyone can hear you.
I need to count it. I am working with my students at the data analytics. I also just begin my path through the board. Many students in actively, I was an instructor, but they never get ready for us. Also, they find it difficult. With the data evidence, I think those skills are highly valuable in dealing with the Board of Education. I believe in critical thinking, fact-finding. Information is based on data, not only motion, but based on data. What is right and what is wrong, what looks to be correct. Numbers always tend to be strong. Beyond my professional career, I have been a teacher at my service. As I said, I was a mentor in the high school program. I was an instructor for the American Career Force. And I also worked at Habitat for Humanities, which was a community-based stewardess position. We built councils, we built families, we built communities, we gave people a place where they had hope. If a lack to the board, my top three are with the data-driven decision-making. We have to see what works and what doesn't work. If it's tough on the board, we need to fix what's wrong. Everything is not wrong if we don't think, but we need to see, assess, where we can do to improve this and implement a more critical way.
One minute left.
Okay, student support and success, we need to support the students mentally, emotionally, and sometimes physically. We have to support the students. They have to survive the curriculum. They have to survive making it through. Okay, the other thing is community engagement and transparency. I believe we should be able to see what everyone is doing, what it means, not what we think it means. We need to know, have that transparency to say that this is what's going on. This is a clear picture of us. And show people that you can trust enough, that the information we give you is the information that is required. Thank you.
Thank you. My turn now. All right, next candidate. I can repeat for you. Introduce yourself, the skills and experiences you bring that prepare you for the Board of Education, and identify your top three priorities as potential Board of Education member. Levon, when you're ready, our candidate will begin. Just give me a thumbs up when you're ready. That's okay. I can do this one, and you'll catch for the last candidate, okay? Perfect. Three minutes, you may begin.
Good evening. Everybody on Darnell gives. I appreciate the opportunity to actually come out here and speak to you guys. So my girlfriend, myself, and my husband, father of four. I work with Exis County Sheriff Office for the past 13 years. I'm the co-founder and deputy director for Exis County Compassionate Case and Justice Nonprofit in New Jersey as a volunteer and active member for the nonprofit and military. Currently serving in United States Air Force and approaching my 16th year in the Air Force. I'm certified instructor, both anthological and petrological learning. I'm also tasked and responsible for developing other instructors to teach newer enlisted personnel and common talents. And also entrepreneur. Been an entrepreneur for greater than 11 years. I've been in businesses, varied from marketing to business acquisitions and business development. My top three, my top three. My top three is going to be safety, for sure. Definitely with everything that's going on right now in the world, school shootings. I'm always a prominent speaker for ensuring that kids will sit at school, and I'm a whole person. My second is going to be having the kids graduate at a higher level than the current graduating rate now. And the reason that is, is because right now, state-run, children are graduating at a lower than a 12 grade. The reason why that affects us as a board and as a family is because they've got now, since they've graduated at a lower grade, this requires them to take immediate classes from state-owned colleges. Taking these immediate college classes, they're first, they're going to do an additional year, which prepares to incur additional costs for the education for immediate classes. My last one is responsible spending.
One minute left.
Responsible spending, okay? Our budget for Orange, in my opinion, is great. Could be better served, you know? Can we spend the money a little bit wiser than we were doing? Absolutely. The equipment we provide for the kids and being with the teachers is phenomenal. However, we don't have the few experts to think in some of the technology that we need to accomplish.
Three seconds.
We have to try these experts in different tasks and different special teams so this way they can actually spread on that new knowledge and experience rather than just giving them a bare minimum. So my responsibility is mostly getting safety, graduating at a higher level, and then also responsibility with responsible spending.
Thank you. Antoine, you may take it away. I'll remind you, we're introducing ourselves, the skills and experiences you bring that prepare you for the Board of Education, and you're going to identify your top three priorities as a potential Board of Education member. Levon, on your mark, we will get ready. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Antoine Tyger Chetman. I'm running for Board of Education because I believe in quality of education. I bring some of the experience as early childhood educator, recent teacher, behavioral analyst, as well as a social worker. I've worked in the National Health System, the Department of New Jersey, Children and Family Services. My reading top priorities rank for Board of Education is early literacy as well as academic excellence. I'm ensuring our children, who are reading, pass to a very, very level and promoting more of our early childhood educates, giving more support to P3. That's where a lot of our children getting skills learned by reading. My second is safety and support of many schools. Promoting its health as well as our facilities and school climate really help build a safety space for our schools. And partnering with our organizations such as Rooker's Behavioral College, it'd be great for many of our schools in Orange. And finally, there's transparency as well as community partnerships by partnering with a lot of our communities and a lot of our community colleges and universities so we'll be able to give more grants for our students. And also, global education, our educators, our residents, and also great decision-making for our schools.
Beautiful. All right, before we move on to the questions, I just asked that the audience silence their phones so that we can keep the focus on the candidates and give them the respect that they deserve. Thank you so much. All right, the first question will go to Darnell. We'll each get a chance to answer, and we'll just go right in the order that you're sitting in, Darnell, Carolyn, and then Antoine, and then for question two, we'll go Antoine, Carolyn, Darnell. Question three will be Carolyn, Antoine, and then Darnell.
Just tell us.
Okay. All right, question one. The Orange Public Schools and Board of Ed have a mandate to support the children of Orange holistically, both their academic learning and their health and wellbeing broadly, addressing challenges that may be barriers to their educational achievement. What do you think is a success of the Board of Ed in this regard over the last five years? And what challenges does the Board need to address? Two minutes on the clock, on your mark. Get set, go.
Great question. When I seen the question, I was amazed. So I'll be honest and tell you this. In order for anyone to answer that particular question, they would have to been part of the board to be able to use the data to see where the start was versus where they had gone. The information which I looked up stated that the current plan that they have expires in 2026. With that current plan that's expiring 2026, we need to analyze that information to see where we degrade at and where we struggle with that. Once we identify our items on which we struggle at, those will be the items that we should focus on to bring that to a higher standard. And I could tell you this, when I see the question, I seem to have this feeling of the question, the first thing that popped on my mind was Maslow's hierarchy needs. Maslow's hierarchy needs states that an individual to a particular child would have to have a psychological benefit, honey, food, water, shelter. Afterwards, afterwards, it should be safety. They have to feel safe in school, right? To the rest, then they have to have a sense of being, of their being loved, of being welcomed to the school, of their being part of the community, you know, dealing with their friends, esteem. They have to feel somewhat positive within the subject, have to feel a bit of a reason for themselves.
How many five seconds there?
Five. So with that being said, I looked up different services in reference to what Orange currently has in mind. To tell you right now, there's a few services, when I read the album, I personally didn't see my way. So a few services I worked with them too. When it comes to emergency assistance, they have the 908, suicide, and crisis center. They also have the New Jersey Health Care Center. They also have the bridge, which is actually here to Exis County Community College, which bridges out community health center.
Beautiful. You good? Five seconds.
Five seconds. And then the last program that they have is the New Jersey Children's Systems of Care that gives out specialized assistance.
Thank you. If anyone, you need to repeat the question, I can. Carolyn, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure.
The Orange Public Schools, excuse me, and Board of Education have a mandate to support the children of Orange holistically, both their academic learning and their health and wellbeing broadly, addressing challenges that may be barriers to their educational achievement. What do you think is a success of the Board of Ed in this regard over the last four years? And what challenges does the Board need to address? You will have two minutes on the clock, on your mark. Get set, go.
The success of the Board of Education in the city of Orange has been the collaboration with the colleges here in New York. The students are getting, they feel the college, getting credit so that the time that you're earning at a college is not something that's going to make them fearful or they're worried, right? So it helps with that. The Stelling Academy, where they're focused on the more of the finances and everything, is very good because we're in a computer tech. Where our students, okay, the other people, they're going to have to check out what you didn't do, right? I have to ask my students, they have to use, you know, how you do this, and what is this room, right? So we're working toward that support system in their real feed to make sure that they don't push and mine and mine.
Okay.
Yeah, make sure that they get what they need, whether it be home social worker or classroom, or just one of them to teach. So we're trying to make sure that these students must serve us well, right? And they don't feel like they have no woman making time to, they have no family. Like I said, to a public, we come to their family, we come to the heart, the heart of the grandparent, that is to say, to be working to succeed in this life.
Beautiful. She's spending time. All right, so we will pass it over to Antoine. You want to give a few questions?
I do.
Sure. The Orange Public Schools and Board of Education have a mandate to support the children of Orange holistically, both their academic learning and their health and wellbeing broadly, addressing challenges that may be barriers to their educational achievement. What do you think is a success of the Board of Education in this regard over the last five years? And what challenges does the Board need to address? I encourage you guys to address your answers to the audience who also came to spend time with you. And then you will have two minutes on the clock, on your mark. Get set, go.
I think that's an amazing question. So we've had a lot of amazing successes over the past five years in the Orange School District. I believe that graduation rates have went up significantly, as well as many students being prepared for college. The partnerships with many colleges and universities is great as well, as well as community health services and counseling such as CSO, as I mentioned before. And also many of the organizations that I work with, non-profit, such as Generations and the others. But we do pose many challenges in our district. Many of our students lose many days at school. That's an issue we do have to fix, as well as our most meaningful outcomes in our schools or SAE in our schools. So I would believe, I believe in bringing early experience into schools. Training teachers in strategies for English learners such as ESL classes, as well as strength training and engagement such as offering resources for parents and caregivers to better support our students in the field.
All right, question two, as far as Antoine, you may keep the mic. And then we will go Carolyn, and then we will go Darnell. All right, question two, on financial stewardship. Many parents feel there is not enough transparency in how district finances are explained. Can you talk about how you would balance financial prudence and commitment to prioritize student learning and wellbeing? On two minutes on the clock, on your mark. Levon, are we set? Go.
I truly believe that's another amazing question, financial stewardship. Sorry. So financial stewardship, I believe that's an amazing question and a great topic within our school districts. Throughout New Jersey, we do have a large issue in transparency with our school districts and not being transparent with our budgets. I believe every single dollar tied to our student success should be transparent and our communities should be able to see where their money's going. So I would support publishing one-page budget summaries easily read to our communities in multiple languages, English, English, trail, as well as Spanish, to support our multilingual caregivers. I also would support posting community budget notes, not only teaching our community caregivers about our school budget and what is going to, as well as the youth as well, our students in the school district. And also using dashboards to show how our funds connect to our content, our literacy, and reduce classroom status as well. I believe balancing prudence for our students is great, as well as waste spending, but also promote spending in places where there's nothing.
Thank you. Carolyn, you want to give a question?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Question two is on financial stewardship. Many parents feel there is not enough transparency in how district finances are explained. Can you talk about how you would balance financial prudence and a commitment to prioritize student learning and wellbeing? On your mark, two minutes on the clock, Levon. Are we set? Go.
I believe in transparency. I believe that we should know where our money is going, our tax money is going, how it is distributed, especially to the Board of Education. The Board of Education is taking a rap of some of the stuff that's going on in the city, right? Accountability will show, this is what we're responsible for, this is what we did with your money. This is how we're trying to help the students, whether it's through the tourism, social services, whatever. We need to be able to show you what we're doing, how we're trying to help your children succeed in life, making sure they got all they've got in their hands. Having transparency there where the parents can, as we said, see it on a dashboard, on the contact menu, and pick up a stat sheet. I think we should know where the money is. How much for each student? How much are we going to allow for each student? So that the parents will feel that they're getting, their students are getting the best that we can give. Right now, I don't know if this parent's feeling that way. I want to make sure that they do, that when they come home and this kid has this thing in my life, this is really great, not the same old same life. And that's what we want to do, we want to make sure that there's accountability, not only from the board, but the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Darnell, do you want to repeat the question?
Sure.
Question two on financial stewardship. Many parents feel there is not enough transparency in how district finances are explained. Can you talk about how you would balance financial prudence and a commitment to prioritize student learning and wellbeing? On your mark, Levon, are we set? Go.
Finance, finance, finance. Anyone who knows in the news, I love the topic of finance. I've been advocating as a member, as a resident of the city, against our current administration in reference to the budget and what we do for the town. Transparency, transparency, transparency. I've advocated for the entire time against our current administration for our town's budget. Sometimes transparency falls off in the moon because simply lots of people in the community don't understand it. So instead of just forcing it down someone's throat, we actually take the time out to actually hire folks jobs so that they're able to come in and actually look at the budget process itself as a whole. Waste of spending and happiness. Can we better give us waste of spending? Absolutely. When we have to sort this money in one particular section, do we have to spend on something else? We may not have to spend on something else, right? How about we re-allocate that fund to a program that's like? We keep talking about transparency. I'm giving out the tone, but people come out and they speak. Maybe that's what I hate. Sometimes it's like their voice isn't heard. If you have people coming out and speak and say, hey, I don't understand something, rather than being upset, and say, you have a problem, try to take the time out and spend it on. If you have a bunch of people say, hey, I don't think we should spend the money. Okay, great, no problem, just have an offline conversation, and then let's review the discuss, how you think the money can then be spent for your kid? Remember, the money is spent for your kid. If the board isn't listening to how you know the money is spent for your kid, who is actually listening to? If they're not listening to you.
All right, question three, that order will go as follows. Yes, Carolyn first. Oh, Darnell's ready. Darnell's second, Antoine third. Get ready. Question three on lead and facilities. How does a community help for lead-free New Jersey, a statewide advocacy organization for removing lead from New Jersey? Lead poisoning poses a danger to all of our children as Orange's schools and housing and border infrastructure are all old enough to have multiple sources of potential lead poisoning. Getting Orange to be lead-free will take all of us. What do you think the school district should be doing to support this aim? And how important is this to you? On your mark, Levon, two minutes on the clock, not two seconds. You may go.
Okay, let's go. When I was growing up, this city knew it. It was a very hot, 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 because of babies. Babies would come around, they're bleeding, you know, kids would come around, you know, and like I said, this would now because of the lead that was in the paint, the lead that was in the plaster, right? Kids suffer damage to their brains, they're just slow learning, the episodes they would have, right? I think that the city of Orange should do an assessment of every bill, whether it be in the walls or be in the pipes. Because one of the things that I'm noticing is that when houses go up for sale, all of a sudden, I see someone working on the piping lines going into the house, which means that you know there's a dead fall, right? I have a water filter, a whole house water filter because the chemicals that ate one thing in that house, right? We want to protect our kids. We want to make sure that they're not breathing in contaminants, that when someone's cooking in the kitchen, that they're not eating the contaminants because something fell down. We need to make sure our school system and the schools that are in this area are up to farm, right? I have an issue with people going to another city and you updating that school system or that school and you didn't do it for the city, for the community. So yeah, that's a hard one.
Thank you. Beautiful. Darnell, do you want to repeat the question?
Sure.
Question three on lead and facilities. How does a community help for lead-free New Jersey, which is a statewide advocacy organization for removing lead from New Jersey? Lead poisoning poses a danger to all of our children as Orange's schools and housing and border infrastructure are all old enough to have multiple sources of potential lead poisoning. Getting Orange to be lead-free will take all of us. What do you think the school district should be doing to support this aim? And how important is this to you? Two minutes on the clock, Levon, are we set? You may begin.
Two things. First thing is, just out of curiosity, show of hands, how many people know about grants that you can apply for to remove lead from your home? So we have approximately 15 people, and three people is here, four people is here. First thing is, inform the people of such grants, okay? I'll give you an example. They have a program card for New Jersey lead remediation and abating program that will spend $108 million in grants that we can apply for to help us remove any type of lead and maybe, you know, maybe a school system. They also use this money for the testing, no cost to you. They also use this money for the testing, no cost to you. New Jersey alone received forty-four million dollars for lead pipes from EPA. Information is key. We have to inform everyone so that they know exactly what they're getting answered for. The second thing is, how many people familiar with all the developers that are coming to town? Everybody, right? We all see the developers coming into the town, building these, running businesses, apartment buildings. Yes? Majority of the time when they build these apartment builds, they have to dig up the gold. Why you think that is? Two reasons, plumbing and power, electric. Since they're digging up the gold, how about during that particular time, we do the lead testing, to see if those pipes are still in the air or contaminated with lead. Since the gold was already dug up, then at that point, the funding that we receive, the anyways they have there is, we can apply that funding and have the lead pressure for police simultaneously. So the gold isn't dug up, when later testing finds out, hey, it's contaminated, then we have to dig up the gold, try to kill two birds with one stone.
Anton, would you like me to repeat the question? Question three on lead and facilities. How does a community hub for lead-free New Jersey, which is a statewide advocacy organization for removing lead from New Jersey? Lead poisoning poses a danger to all of our children as Orange's schools and housing and border infrastructure are all old enough to have multiple sources of potential lead poisoning. Getting Orange to be lead-free will take all of us. What do you think the school district should be doing to support this aim? And how important is this to you? Levon, two minutes on the clock, are we set? You may begin.
Um, I think that's a great question, Lev. Many of our facilities are lead-based, they were built in nineteen ninety.
Are you positive on that?
I do believe that a lot of our buildings are lead-based, they were built in nineteen ninety. Um, fixing the lead infrastructure issue won't be a once-in-a-time job or an easy fix. It will take more than just money, but also educating my parents through multiple resources, such as our Department of Children and Family Services, who will offer great resources on how our partnership for our children with free lead testing. A lot of parents don't know that children are held to free lead testing in the United States of New Jersey. So I believe educating my parents, as well as educators, administrators would be a first step to helping with lead infrastructure question.
Thank you. All right, and mighty question four. Yes, we're gonna go Carolyn first. Uh, actually, one second. One of the children, everybody has had a chance to go first. Looks like so, yes. All right, Carolyn, you can start us off. We'll throw the first. All right, question four, transparency and accountability. How will you strengthen trust between the Board and Orange community? How will you hold yourself and fellow board members accountable when answers and commitments to the community are not followed through? Levon, two minutes on the clock, are we set? You may begin.
Okay, friends and parents, we have to do a whole, a whole piece of questions. We have to have the information.
Close your eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to, we have the information available to the fans, to the community of what is going on in New York. All right? Look, if this, you know, I'm hardly doing anything, it's none of that. Accountability is, we have to put people's foot to the fire. If you say this, this is what you must do. If you're superintendent, this is what you must do. Right? You put students first, you don't put politics first. Politics have, I mean, yes, politics to a point, but not when it comes back to educating our students. Right? We need to be able to have that accountability for all of our. The superintendent reports to the board, the teacher reports to the superintendent. Right? If a question is asked and they don't know the answer to, we should be putting our foot to the fire. When I was in the business world, someone called a nigga coming, it's like the niggas calling me back. I came, but I'll be the last one that you talk to. I will make sure that someone calls you back. I will make sure you get the answer that you have. And when I just follow up with them to make sure that they got that answer that they have. It's so and so contacted you, but no, not over here, we didn't hear. If they did, they're not going to that purpose. Why didn't you contact this person back?
Thirty seconds?
Right? So like I said, it comes down to responsibility. Our responsibility is to the students and to the community. And that's what we're trying to do, and it's.
I will repeat the question. Yep, Darnell, yes, I will repeat the question for you. All right, Anton, you ready? Transparency and accountability. How will you strengthen the trust between the Board and the Orange community? How will you hold yourself and fellow board members accountable when answers and commitments to the community are not followed through? Levon, two minutes on the clock, are we set? You may go.
Um, I believe transparency and accountability.
A little closer.
I believe transparency is part of our governments, of our government, and also any political aspect we go into. Um, I believe trust is an action, not just a slogan. So we do what we say and just not say it. Um, to ensure this whole push for public dashboards for goal tracking of such things as attendance regulation and literacy rates. Um, also regular community listening sessions for media people. As well as probably through by publishing what was promised and so it can be delivered. Um, I believe accountability also means by holding ourselves as fellow board members accountable of what we do in our actions as well, not just our educators and our superintendent. Thank you.
Darnell, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
Okay, switching it up. Two minutes on the clock, Levon, are we set? You may begin.
Uh, transparency, usually I have this, this misinformation. There'll be someone who receives some information, makes an attempt to raise someone else. It's totally different from us. Multiple ways combat that. You do something as simple as an email newsletter, okay? You do something as simple as a recaps of what education, uh, meaning more was. You can also add it to the point where perhaps from the city council meeting, they do a small weekend of education. Maybe some of the more important topics that the residents actually. But it's always a big thing, perhaps at the city council meeting, they announce, hey, the board of education is looking for us to, this particular line item on the budget. They know you're best, we know, we're staying from the board. Saying the board is the way, we give a little bit, a little bit more time to look into it. Sharing the information shouldn't be wrong. Someone asking a question shouldn't be wrong. Someone asking a question shouldn't be, they shouldn't get added to the back. Actually, a question, you're a public service to me, you work for me, I shouldn't give you that to me. If I don't understand something, I should be able to get an answer from you, wouldn't add to me. Or request a piece of documentation, I should be able to give you a piece of documentation request. You're gonna present something to me, I should be able to say, okay, it sounds good. Where is it at, where can you? Shouldn't have to get the answer, the next move, I'll have it. The next week comes, that's where I'll have it. Everything should be up for, for, up for the front. So it's where there's no guess as to where I can get the information from. There's no guesses, who said what?
All right, and now we have arrived at our closing statements, to which we will each have thirty seconds. Uh, from the beginning, you answered last, is that right, Anton? So you can answer first, we'll go reverse order if that's okay. All right. Thirty seconds on the clock, Levon, are we set? You may begin.
I'm running for every children of Orange, I'm not able to throw back on the prime. Um, growing up and also working in urban communities, it has really showed me first-hand barriers that children face within the communities. Um, the first-hand experience as an educator to help out for the working community service, I'll fight for transparency and equity and also excellence within our community.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Levon, we're set. Thirty seconds on the clock, you may begin.
Both gentlemen considered their cases very well, hard to be seen up here with them. I'm trying to, working, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we'll call it a time.
I was trying to say it all.
That's all right.
Okay.
Well, uh, what, uh, what time does she have left? All right, sixteen seconds left, okay?
Okay.
All right, you got this.
Okay.
You may begin.
Okay, I hope the brave dedication transparency and the time that it took for the education, the lead. One of the things is that we, there are no questions that we cannot answer. If there's a question that is, that's considered stupid. You know, if you don't ask a question, that's stupid, right? If you ask a question, that means that you don't know the answer to.
Thank you. Thirty seconds on the clock. On your mark, get set, go.
With me, it's like the three things that makes me a good board member. One, military service. Military service, any military member will tell you, we have the highest level of dedication to what you know. That's how I see it all. I bring that same dedication here to Orange for education. Entrepreneurship, you have to know what numbers look like. You have to be able to look at a budget, analyze a budget, see what's going, see what's happening. When a law enforcement background, safety, safety, safety.
Three seconds.
With that, you have to be able to predict and have to have good forecasts.
Thank you. All right, let's give a round of applause to our board members. I want to thank you all, I'm really respectful of the tenure, respectful of our time, and respectful of the constituent times. We really greatly appreciate it. Um, I am signing off again. Panaya, good luck to each of you. I am going to pass it over to Douglas, who will tell you about the Hub's tenth birthday celebration. Stay tuned.
Okay, before I do what I said I do, I do my, my, my. Again, the candidates, um, we, there are eight candidates running for election. These are the three who could make it tonight. We have four through, I saw in his regards, he's very ill, so cannot be here tonight. We have four who did respond or had various reasons for not being able to attend. Obviously, our democracy nationally is in a bit of a pickle. Uh, we know that the democratic practice starts at home, so I thank the candidates for doing well. And I wanted to, to, who was there today, appreciate your attendance. I also want to give, obviously, a special talent to our mother, from her. Um, there's a board member, a couple going from there.
Four years, I'm turning four as a board member.
Um, I also want to really chat out how a hub drew Thomas for the fellow, uh, Levon Boykins, who ended up having a sort of, like, the candidates posted roundtables with parents to find out the issues that are at the heart of parents' concerns for their elections. So thank you, Levon. Um, I'm the managing director of the hub. For those of you who are, if you're first time in here, we're a community center here in Orange. These buildings are home to four local organizations, the University of Orange, which is a people's school. Landy, who provides ESL and immigration services for Orange's movement communities. The New York Work Center, we're organizing with, we're on networkers and other typically organized sectors of the labor industry. We also have our spaces available for meetings, parties, gatherings, et cetera. Um, and these debates, which are really crucial. For the last ten years, we've been hosting civic engagement debates like this for mayor, mayor elections, city council elections, we've done a couple of debate elections in the past, so this is the first one in a while. Um, and yeah, this year we're turning ten years. We've been doing this for ten years. So we're gonna celebrate on November eighth, which is a Saturday from two to five P M. It's gonna be a super fun gathering, party. We get to hang out with Panaya and Levon and Ernest, a photographer and social media person. So please join us on November eighth. Um, do you want to leave your email address on the, the, sign sheet at the back? Or follow us at orangehub, at orangehub on Instagram, in a couple of two years.